Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us on the media briefing for this Wednesday. We've got a lot of topics today, so we'll go ahead and get started. And we're going to start with our Monterey County Rent Assistance Program. We've talked about this program before, and it has a lot to offer residents in our community. And some of the rules for the program are changing. And so we've got Katie Castagna from United Way here with us to talk about what's available and what some of the changes are. And she's brought some partners in the program with her. Hi, Katie.
Good morning. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. We're hoping today to walk you through the program, some changes, and some just current updates. I'm here with two partners today, Linda Sanchez from Goodwill Central Coast, as well as Anna Ibarra, who's from Hartnell College. And they are both working diligently with us as part of this ERAP relief distribution. I'd like to just share my screen, if I may. And for many of you, this is a review of the system that we set up, starting in March. This is to help distribute rent and utility assistance that is funded by both federal and state governments and coordinated through the county of Monterey. So people may apply for this assistance through 211 or directly through an online application on our website. And I have the URLs here. Once those applications are received, we assign them to one of our 14 partner agencies. And those agencies then proceed with communicating directly with the applicant to process their application and hopefully ultimately pay past or current rent due and pay utility bills that are overdue. The partners that we have assembled are, let's see. Here's a list of our countywide partners, including many nonprofit organizations, several city governments, the two community colleges through their foundations, as well as the Housing Resource Center. I want to call them out because they are specifically handling applications from landlords themselves. This benefit is available to people who have been COVID impacted. And that is in many ways, whether it's reduced wages or needing to stay home with children who are out of school. There are many different economic impacts of COVID. They also need to be low income, below the 80th percentile of our area median income. And they need to reside here in Monterey County. So one of the important things that's happened this week is a change in the benefit level. And we are still developing an implementation strategy for that. But essentially, in the past, past due rent was only payable at 80%, and the landlord had to forgive the remaining 20%. Currently now, we can pay 100% of back rent due, which means landlords do not need to forgive that or give up that 20%. And we can also pay up to 100% of current rent due. And those are big changes. The other thing is, for people who had already participated, the landlord that was willing to forgive 20%, there is a provision that we can go back and top off those payments, if you will. So this was just signed into law a day and a half ago. And we're looking at the implementation locally. So our request to the community is to be patient on the topping off, but know that that will be coming. And please, if you have not yet applied, we've had over almost 4,000 applications to date. But we know that there's many more people out there who, for many reasons, may not have applied. So we want to make sure people are encouraged to continue to apply. And now I'd like to turn it over to, I'll start with Anna Ibarra from Hartnell College. And I'd like her to talk a little bit about what the process looks like once an application has been received and how to help us expedite that application so that we can provide the benefit as quickly as possible. Thank you, Anna.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I work at Hartnell Community College, at one of the agencies, working on this project. And the process really is, on our end, is ensuring that we receive documentation from the applicant and then communicate with landlords to make sure that we have documentation from them as well, and then process payment. So one of the things that speeds this up and could really help the process is ensuring that documentation is submitted in a timely manner. We've noticed this really helps with processing payments as soon as possible. And also, any questions that are out there regarding these documents, it's important that they are communicated to us because it could just be, you know, a single thing that we can answer and then that could really unblock the road to receive payment. And we're just increased capacity, I believe. You know, most of the agencies have done this as well. So we're excited to, you know, be able to speed, to process applications as soon as possible. At Hartnell Community College, we've helped close to 200 applicants. And we've distributed over a half a million dollars. And, you know, the applicant's needs varies. You know, we've helped single mothers, single parents, people who lost loved ones, or just people who are behind on their rent and decided to use credit cards and now find themselves with debt. So, you know, the need out there is broad, and we welcome everybody to apply if you need to. And if your application is in the queue, just be sure that one of us will get to it soon. And we will continue to do our work and process as fast as we can.
Thank you, Anna. And so one of the takeaways there is that follow-up because there's sometimes some back and forth about getting that information. And so please, you know, so message to the community is don't hesitate to be in close communication with the agency that's working on your application. And so then next, I'd like to ask Linda Sanchez to talk a little bit about the process from the goodwill perspective.
Hi, everyone. My name is Linda Sanchez, and I'm with Goodwill Central Coast. The process here at Goodwill is somewhat similar to what Anna described. One of the definitely the barriers that I've seen in helping applicants one-on-one is that, you know, they don't have all the documentation we need already. And secondly, is when they do finally have all that together and they bring it in or they email it, it's not all completed, like there's a signature missing. I countless of times I've had W9s where, you know, everything's filled out, but we're missing the signature. And so it's just little things like that that, you know, makes the process, you know, take a little bit longer than what we would like it to. So I definitely agree with Anna that, you know, bringing in all the documentation. Another thing is definitely the applicants, you know, even if it's just a simple question, or to clarify something, for them not to hesitate to give us a call, send an email. I know that most of us are starting to open up now. I know here for my agency, we are doing in person, but only by appointment. But if they stop by and it's just a simple question, we're more than happy to, you know, let them in and we'll answer that question. But I do want to emphasize again, it's, the key thing is really getting all the documentation together as quickly as possible, making sure that everything is completed, all signatures are gathered. And communication between, you know, with the landlord as well. There has been countless of times where I've reached out to the landlord and they did not know that their tenant had applied. So it's just, for me at least, those are the three key things. And if we were to let our applicants know, I think that will definitely speed up the process. I do want to share a quick success story with you guys because I think this is a big one. We did help out a family of six. They owed $33,000 in arrears, and we were able to help with the 80% on that and three future months at 25%. So not only that, but they also lost a family member due to COVID. So we were able to refer them to the FEMA funeral resources, and they were able to get help with that too, among other things. So that is one of the, an additional thing that here at Goodwill Central Coast, we are definitely doing, and we're utilizing the small referral software program to do those other immediate referrals that the families may need, whether it be counseling or a food drive, or, you know, just different things. And up to today, we have helped 183 households, which that puts us a little bit over $500,000 spent. That doesn't count the upcoming ones that are in process of getting the approval. But definitely, now that we have additional help, we're definitely going to get through a lot more applications quicker.
Thank you, Linda. And so these are just two of our partners. As you can see, we've got really strong organizations with caring people, working in them to address that long list of applicants as quickly as we can. Key takeaways are that, you know, for people to be prepared to submit the information, to check that it's all been complete, and that they have good communication with their landlord. We've had almost 4,000 applications to date. And actually, the application rate is increasing. So we're pleased to know that people know that the help is there. We know that in some cases, it's been a bit of a long wait. It's starting to speed up, and you can help us outreach to folks to definitely get in the queue and know that we have a great set of partners working on this program.
When hearing a success story just makes all the difference. What a wonderful outcome for that family. One quick question before we move on to our next topic. For people who want to apply, the entry point is still online at United Way, but your partners are there to help support the work?
Yes, so they are referred the application. So we still have the central point of entry either by phone, if you want to have a verbal application done through 211, or you can apply directly online.
Great, thank you. And if you could all stay on the line for any questions that we might have afterwards, thanks very much for sharing all this information.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to 4th of July and fireworks. In case you didn't know, the 4th of July is already around the corner. And you may have already heard the celebration starting in your neighborhood with all the fireworks, both legal and illegal. So we've got two representatives today to talk about kind of the situation that it puts the county and cities in because in some areas, safe and sane are allowed, but there are certainly still fire dangers. And in some areas, no fireworks are allowed because of high danger. So I'm joined with Commander Daryl Simpson from the Monterey County Sheriff's Office, and also Chief Jim Langborg from Greenfield's Fire Department to talk about both of those things. Thank you both for joining me. Commander Simpson, I'm wondering if you could start us off. The county has a no fireworks policy, and I'm wondering if you could talk about why that is? You're mute. You're on mute. You're on mute.
I apologize for that.
No problem.
Thanks for having me. And to answer your question, it's just the high levels of fuel that would feed a fire right now. Chief Langborg is going to be able to speak in much greater detail and expertise on that subject. But we have so much diverse landscape in the unincorporated area, and there's so much fuel there. And we have a lot of areas that haven't burnt in years. So the fuel has just been building and building and accumulating. And even safe and sane fireworks are pyrotechnic. And they have flame, they have spark. And once a fire is started, it's really hard to control. And I don't think people realize how fast a fire can spread. So it is true that there's some cities that are going to allow safe and sane in certain designated areas. But as for the county and the unincorporated area, there'll be no fireworks permitted.
And so what would you tell people, you know, now and then through the holiday? For instance, if they're reporting, you know, what they're seeing or hearing in terms of fireworks, what do you recommend for people in the unincorporated area?
Absolutely to report it when they see it or when they hear it. We understand there's going to be barbecues and block parties and friends and family hanging out. We encourage that. The Sheriff's Office takes great pride in the fact that we not only work here, we live here and we're part of this community. Our success is contingent on our relationship with the community. So absolutely want to get those calls. The last thing we want to do is to spend our resources fighting a fire. We'd rather stop it before it happens. So we encourage people to keep a surprise of any fireworks that they see or hear in the area they live in.
All right, thank you. And then Chief Langborg, thanks very much for being on the media briefing today. Greenfield is one of those cities in the middle where they're allowing safe and sane, but a little worried when you look out around the city limits.
Yes, that's correct. And first of all, thank you very much for having me on. And to add on to Commander Simpson's comments, yeah, it is a little scary this time of year. The fuels are dry, and it doesn't take much to start a fire. And as we know, particularly in the South County area, the winds pick up in the evenings and in the afternoons. And if conditions are right, just a small spark can create a pretty significant fire. And one of the things that I'd like to share with everyone was my experience last year. So I've been in the fire service 28 years. And last 4th of July was, for lack of better words, the craziest 4th of July that I've ever worked. And I realized that our nation and our local communities were pent up, and they were releasing some of that energy. But the result of that was our fire department going to back-to-back fires. Literally, we would clear one and then go to another one. And as I was listening on the radio, it wasn't just our fire department. It was all of South County. There were multiple times where all the firefighting resources were exhausted. And that meant that if there was another fire, there wouldn't be any response. We and other fire departments were able to keep up with it. In Greenfield, we didn't have any significant loss. But I have to tell you, as the fire chief, there were a few seconds there where I got a little nervous and I was worried. So I think I'd like to communicate to our community and to people that live in other communities that using illegal fireworks, or even if you are using legal and allowed fireworks in your community, you need to do it responsibly. Because if you don't, something significant can happen. Someone can get hurt, property can be lost or worse. And that's not something that we want to have on a day that's intended to be a celebration and intended to create memories for your family.
So before, and I hope you guys will stay on after our other presenters in case we've got some questions. But for people who are reporting illegal fireworks, how should they do it? I live in Salinas, and car alarms are going off, you know, in my neighborhood for the illegal fireworks. Do I call 911? I don't want to do that. It's not an emergency. Do you call a non-emergency line? What do you recommend to people?
You know, I think I can really only speak for our community. And I can tell you that on 4th of July in general, and especially again this year, after our experience last year, they're going to see a heavy police presence patrolling the streets as well as a heavy fire presence. And I think it's perfectly appropriate to go flag down an officer and, you know, and say, hey, you know, that house down the street is doing or utilizing what appears to be illegal fireworks or doing something in a dangerous way. And then our law enforcement will go down and have an interaction with them. The philosophy in our city is, we don't want to be the heavy on anybody. We will also, we will not confiscate your fireworks. I believe the plan is, is that if we do find illegal fireworks, what's going to happen is they're going to make you soak them with a garden hose and make them so that they can't work, and that they're inert, basically. But we don't want to have a negative experience, but we also want to be safe. And every interaction that either the fire department or the police department has will be positive and will be safety oriented.
Commander Simpson, what do you recommend for people in unincorporated areas?
Well, I think the chief was very well stated. I would say that we don't want to inundate the 911 emergency line. And that if you see fireworks, there's probably hundreds of people that are seeing them. So we encourage you to either, like the chief said, flag down an officer or call the non-emergency line, 755-5111. We also, I wanted to take a minute to address the pets. Make sure that your pets have their animal tags on them, the name and a contact number. Small animals can be taken inside if possible. If you have pastured animals, make sure your fences are intact and possibly have contact information on the harness of those animals. I mean, it's terrifying to the pets in our community. But again, we learned a lot of lessons last year, like the chief said, with the fires he had. We also had the Carmel and River Fire. People had to come from out of state to help us fight that fire. We were there 24/7 for weeks. And it's just, again, back to the fuel. And we're a very large county and area, and there's still a lot of fuel out there. And it's very dry and volatile right now.
Thank you both. Great advice for everyone. I really appreciate your comments. If you'd stay on the line in case we have some questions for you afterwards, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're going to turn now to the Great Plates Program. We've talked about this program over the last year. It's been going on for more than a year, and it has really helped seniors, vulnerable seniors, stay healthy and helped some businesses stay in business during the pandemic. But some changes are in the works, and Diana Jimenez from our Social Services Department is here to tell us about it. Hi, Diana.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you again for the opportunity to share this update. The Great Plates Delivered Program will sunset July 9. And as Maya said, it was implemented in May of last year by the Department of Social Services to provide nutritious meals to older adults as they sheltered in place, and also provide some financial support to local food businesses who were severely impacted by the COVID-19 virus. I'm proud and honored to announce that as of June 28, we have delivered over 279,000 meals and provided over $6.3 million in stimulus money to local restaurants who served an average of 320 seniors on a monthly basis. And I would like to share an email comment that I just got from one of the restaurants that participated in the program, who, and I'm paraphrasing, who stated that the program has not only saved them physically, mentally, spiritually, morally, and of course, as well financially, it added stability to them, the business owner, but not just to the business owner, but to the employees and their families that they hired that was possible through this program. The Great Plates Delivered Program was though set up as a temporary emergency relief program by FEMA and the California Office of Emergency Services to reinforce social distancing, minimize hospital surge, and address food insecurity during the pandemic. So as I said earlier, it will end July 9. We do want to inform seniors, although we sent them notices and resource flyers, we do want seniors to know about alternative food resources available to them, such as CalFresh. And if they're 60 or over, they can apply through GetCalFresh.org. There's also the Food Bank that's available, and Meals on Wheels of Monterey Peninsula, as well as Meals on Wheels of Salinas Valley. So there's some alternative programs. And we're hoping that all the seniors that participated in the Great Plates Program will transition to one of them. As we close out, I would like to thank the following. The Department of Social Services staff, who oversee the AAA staff, who worked diligently behind the scenes to implement the Great Plates Program and complete weekly state mandated reporting, which was a huge task, if you can imagine. We also want to thank the United Ways 211 staff, who assisted us with referrals and also getting the word out and information about the Great Plates Delivered Program. We want to thank the participating businesses who dedicated themselves to provide and deliver nutritious meals to seniors during the pandemic. And we want to thank the participating seniors who were so gracious and appreciative of the program. I also want to thank the Monterey County Board of Supervisors for supporting the program locally. And I also want to thank you, Maya, and the media partners for helping us get the word out about this program and reach the seniors that participated in the program. It has been an honor for me to partner with all of you and make the Great Plates Delivered Program a success. So thank you.
Thank you, Diana. And I know you have one other thing happening tomorrow. I wondered if you wanted to take a minute to talk about the One Stop Community Center Open House tomorrow and ribbon cutting.
Yes, so another great project made possible by our staff. So what we're celebrating and doing is honoring the fact that we, at the One Stop Career Center, well, formerly the One Stop Career Center, we've transitioned it to the One Stop Community Center, which is located at 730 LaGuardia. We now have co-located and combined the Aging and Adult Services Branch, which includes programs such as IHSS, Adult Protective Services, Information and Referral. We have now co-located them with the Cowork's Employment Services staff, which means this center has transitioned into a multi-generational service provider center. And we are really glad and excited about transforming the center and making it family and family-friendly. So when you come in, you'll see these giant murals that were painted by two local artists, a mom and a daughter combination. And they volunteered their time to do this on weekends, but it's pretty remarkable. And it doesn't say government all over it. You know, you come in. We want families to feel comfortable and welcome. And we know that the families that we're serving are usually coming to us in stressful situations. And if they can take their mind away from that just for a little bit, that environment helps do that. And we also established a children's section because we know we're serving families, all ages, the very young to the very old, with different abilities. So we created this child resource center for little ones to, I guess, take advantage of while their parents are waiting to be seen by one of our staff members. So the ribbon cutting will be tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00. We're having a few of the board of supervisors join us. We're going to provide free food, music, and free raffle tickets. So we invited all our IHSS recipients and providers, our Cowork's families. We're going to give away free diapers to the families that we serve and VIPs and things that they might need in addition to PPE equipment. So that's what's happening tomorrow.
It's going to be a great day. So tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 at the One Stop Community Center.
Yes.
Thanks very much, Diana, for information on both of those. And then finally, we're going to wrap up with our Climate Action Plan. And it is last, but certainly not least, as part of the county's climate action program, and sorry, plan, and the work that involves, that is involved in that, the county wants to bring together a community-based organizations to take part in an equity panel. And why that is a great thing is what Ashley Paulsworth is going to talk with us about today. She is the Sustainability Program Manager for the county. Hi, Ashley.
Hi, Maya, and hi, everybody on the line. Thanks so much for inviting me to participate in this briefing. So yes, we are launching our stakeholder engagement. So yes, we are launching our stakeholder engagement efforts for our Climate Action Plan. And what we're looking to do is offer stipends up to $1,000 per organization that is able to participate to cover both staff time and community-based outreach and events to share in our efforts towards our Climate Action Plan. And so we're going to be releasing this call for the community-based organizations through our website and through an email blast. And by visiting the website, you can learn more about the program and you can apply if you are an eligible organization. So, you know, we're looking for organizations that are directly and involved in the community, such as faith-based organizations or charitable organizations, clubs or volunteer organizations and other social support networks. We insist that you have a presence in Monterey County and that you represent some of the underserved segments of the population. And the application itself to participate in the program is relatively simple. It's meant to be simple because we understand that, you know, what we're asking of our organizations is a lot and we don't want to overcomplicate things with the application itself. So it's really just about providing your contact information and information about your mission and why you might be a good fit. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is to put together this panel so that we can, you know, not only build the overall community capacity to address and prepare for climate change, but also to really collaboratively develop a set of recommendations for the Climate Action Plan itself. And we want to not only share data, but we also want to hear about the needs of underserved communities in the face of climate change and other disasters. And this panel is really going to try to do that by providing an opportunity for the county to develop considerations concerning community members that don't always get a chance to participate or in this kind of decision-making process. And so we'll be having the call for organizations open for a month and we'll be selecting organizations to participate. So the call will open up tomorrow, July 1st, and so we'll leave it open until August 1st. And then participation would start in September and go for somewhere between 12 and 18 months, depending on, you know, how the plan itself is coming together. But the commitments for the equity panel are basically that we'd like them to attend two to three meetings throughout the development of the Climate Action Plan and also be available for three to four one-on-one calls with our county staff. And we're also very interested in organizations that want to carry the message of the Climate Action Plan to their communities and that want to form long-term partnerships to address and prepare for climate change. So that's the gist of the program. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I think you're muted, Maya.
I sure am. Thank you so much. First, I'm wondering if you put the website in the chat for people to find. I'll give you a minute, but then I do have, I do have a question about the types of groups that you're looking for. I think when people think of climate change, they think of environmental groups. But that is not the case for an equity panel. So why would a non-environmental group be a real asset to an equity panel?
Yeah, so first off, that's absolutely right. We're not asking necessarily for environmental groups. There are some environmental groups that have an overlap between climate change and equity. But really what we're trying to do is engage with those in our community that aren't familiar with this topic so that they can help us to understand their concerns, because we don't have that direct conduit to all of our community members. And so that's what we're trying to do is gather information from those that don't normally participate in this project, process, so that they can teach us about how climate change affects them and also how our strategies that we're proposing in our Climate Action Plan might have some unintended consequences on their community or how we can make those strategies more applicable for their community. Because we don't want to make assumptions about what's going to work in one place or another and we really want to hear what the community members think.
All right, thank you. And then I'll give you a second if you would maybe cut and paste the website in so people can have that. So not only does it have the application, a way to apply, but it also has information on what the equity panel is, what some of the topics will be and the involvement that people will have. So right now, I don't have any questions in the chat for any of our presenters. I'm, we're all done with presentations. Are there any questions before we wrap up the briefing for today? And I'm giving Ashley a moment to get that in the chat.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not prepared with that. Actually, we don't have the website launched yet, so it's not a live link. So I'm just going to direct people to our sustainability homepage where they can then connect tomorrow.
Perfect. And then we can also, for our media partners, we can send out a link and some additional information after the briefing as well. So with that, thanks, everyone, for joining us. It was really a very interesting 40 minutes or so and great information. Our next media briefing will be next week and we'll see you then. Thanks, everyone.